Welcome and thank you for attending this evening's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. As you can see, the agenda is being displayed on the screen for you to follow along. There will be two times this evening for the public to address the board. The first time needs to be relative to Agenda Item 7.01 through 12.01. Those are action items. And the second time for public comments, it's for the good of the will. So there are signup sheets in the back, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. And Bart, would you please take the role?
Mr. Byrd?
Here.
Dr. French?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here. Will you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. Yes.
Up first, we have district highlights and recognitions. 3.01, American Legion, Americanism, and Government Test Recognition. Mr. Velardo is going to start us off with that.
Thank you, President. Davidson, I would just like, at this time, we're going to have a couple of recognitions tonight. We're very excited about that, glad that all of you are here. The first recognition is for the American Legion, Americanism, and Government Test Recognitions. At this time, I'd like to invite Commander Pete Odison to the podium to make the introductions.
Thank you. Is this working? How is that?
It's good.
Good. The A&amp;G testing, which is known for Americanism and Government Test, is developed by the American Legion in the state of Ohio. And it's a one-hour completed test, including an essay. Each question is worth two points, and the essays are used if there's a tie. An example would be asking the U.S. Constitutional Amendments that grant the right to vote, freedom for slavery, and so forth. And also, what does the rights guarantee? The purpose is to promote and evaluate the knowledge of students in regards to our nation and our local governments. And we work hard at this. And the purpose of the test is to promote and evaluate the knowledge of students in regards to our nation and local government. Who is given to the test? It's the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. And because of the difficulty, the Western schools usually only offer to the top students in the government classes. I'm going to also hit the Boys and Girls State too, real quick. The Boys and Girls State, we're sending, the Westerville Legion sends more students to the Boys and Girls State than any other Legion hall in the state of Ohio, and we've continued to do that over the years. The girls go to Mount Union University in Alliance, Ohio, which happens to be my hometown. And boys go to Bowling Green for a week. And they have a question, we have a question sessions for them at the Legion. I encourage everyone in this city to try to join when we have them question sessions. You'll be amazed with the students, how they answer their questions, and how good of a job they do. The largest group that Westerville says, I said, sends to these universities for a week training, and when they come back, it's amazing. You'll talk to people years later, and they'll say, "I was there, and it really helped me understand how government works." Because it's all done around government, from electing a mayor to electing a congressman and everything in the city. I also would want to thank the school systems for educating these children, because without that education, we wouldn't be doing this. And you're doing an excellent job. Keep it up. Thank you.
And I'm Bev Atling. I'm the student, the chairperson for Buckeye Boys State and Girls State, and have been the chairperson for Americanism and Government Testing in the past. Not this year, but I'm doing the honors tonight, because Donna Chapman could not be here. So first, we have seven Americanism and Government Test winners from Westerville that we'd like to present. We have Kelsey Cox. And as I call your name, could you come forward? Kelsey Cox and Hunter Meadows are both sophomores at Westerville North High School. They had the highest score of all the sophomores in the district. Nicole Dynan is at Westerville, she's a junior at Westerville Central. She had the highest overall score for all the junior girls in Westerville and in District 12, which is central Ohio, Franklin County. We have four district winners from Franklin County this year. Nicole. Next would be Elijah Lern is a junior at Westerville North. And Brian Peck. Elijah and Brian actually tied scores this year, and the tiebreaker was their essay. So Elijah and Brian both had very high scores, highest-scoring juniors. Brian was honored as a district, Legion District 12 winner. That's Franklin County. And seniors, we have Carmen Stone and Tristan Justice from Westerville North. Carmen was a Girls State student last year, so it was nice to see her again. She was the highest-scoring senior girl in Westerville and the highest-scoring senior girl in Franklin County, as well as Tristan. Tristan was the highest-scoring senior boy in Westerville and the highest-scoring senior boy in Franklin County. And he had the highest score of all the students who took the test. So they deserve a round of applause. Next, excuse me. Next, we have the Buckeye Boys State and Buckeye Girls State girls, Buckeye Girls State students. I'm going to have the boys come forward first, but I would like to, before I read their names, I do want to recognize Alex Malik. Alex is at Central?
Andrew North.
North. He's a junior at Westerville North. He was selected as a delegate to Boys State, but he's not going to be able to attend, because he's going to be at a leadership conference at West Point and Annapolis. So he is here, but he cannot attend this summer.
That's an excuse.
I think it's a great excuse, yes. All right. So we have Boys State delegates that are going. Eric Otta, who is ill, he cannot be here. Xavier Byrd, so would you come forward as I read your name? Xavier Byrd. Joe Bougenstein. Ben Coffey, who is not here tonight. Jalen Frantle. Luke Hall. Cameron Heller. Owen Jakuki. Chris Ogle. Joe Thompson. Samuel Vozar, who's ill. And Hunter Wolf. Hey, next, next we have the girls who will be attending Buckeye Girls State as delegates. We have Jesuwan Adarkwa. Hope Hessler. Jaclyn Kaye. Bailey Line, who is not here tonight. Morgan McCarthy. Dion Mensah. Allison Schmidt. And Maria Wisman, who is not here tonight. Thank you. I would like to say one more thing to the board. On behalf of the American Legion, I have been doing this, heading up Boys State and Girls State for seven years, and it is such a labor of love, and I have the most wonderful people, staff people, in Westerville to work with. All three of the high school principals, and Don Ogle, and he's here tonight, and Tim Smith, Jim Brady at Westerville North, and Todd McDavid at Westerville South. They all are just fantastic, and with both programs. They work with us on both of those. So kudos to them, and they all deserve a raise. So thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. And I don't know if...
We just want to thank you all for being here. And as we always say, at this time, if you would like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you are welcome to do that. Just congratulations to all, and thank you all of the adults and teachers, administrators involved in this process. And I believe there's going to be some pictures outside in the hallway.
I don't know what she's doing there. It's like she's waiting for something. Her chair is set aside.
Okay, moving on in the agenda. 4.01, approval of our meetings, or of our minutes and discussion of the Board of Education meeting held on Monday, April 20th and April 27th. We have two there. Okay. Nothing. So that takes us to reports. Our first report, we are very, very excited about, 5.01 Hawthorne Book Project. And we're going to have third-grade teacher Kate Mantenix from Hawthorne start us out.
Hi there. I'm Kate Mantenix. I teach third grade at Hawthorne Elementary, lucky to teach the third grade at Hawthorne Elementary. Thank you for having us tonight. We have been working on a book project that we wanted to share with you. We wrote a real book. It is published. You can buy it on Amazon. It actually has an ISBN number and all. And we brought the authors here to share with you their fine work. My partner in crime is Dr. Dorothy Laal. She's a professor emeritus at Ohio University. We missed each other by one quarter. She could have been my reading professor, but now I've got to work with her, and I've been very lucky to do so. So the kids are going to share with you a couple of things they've learned. They are going to share with you what they've learned about writing a book and what they've learned about the history of Hawthorne. So I have, I'll introduce them all real quickly. I have Ife, Tommy, Quaku, Isaac, James Taylor, Caitlin, Tori, Kayla, Noah, and Ethan. So they're all going to share with you just a little bit about what we've learned.
We wrote a book about Hawthorne because nobody else had written a book about Hawthorne, and we needed to learn about our local communities. And since Hawthorne is a type of community, if we wrote a book, we'd be able to use it again in the future to learn more.
We also needed to learn the features of nonfiction text. And so we thought, maybe we should write a book about Hawthorne, because no one had, no one else had ever written a book about it.
Chapter one, what we learned about writing a book. We learned how to make words in books, and we learned how to read a map. What we learned about Hawthorne's history. We learned that in 1924, kids of the area first went to Minerva Park School, and in 1957, they opened Hawthorne. And we learned that they used to have four buses, and now we have nine buses.
Chapter two, what we learned about writing a book. We practiced how to, how to read bar graphs. The enrollment changed from 84 students to 645 students. We learned how to make a glossary. For example, the words on the bottom. What we learned about Hawthorne's history. We learned that the teachers were the Hawthorne, because if we didn't have a teacher, we wouldn't be here to learn. What we learned, what we learned, that kids used to get paddled. Today, that kids get rewarded for doing well. For example, we learned that kids get paddled when they do something bad. And when they do something well today, we get, you do green dojo, and if we do well in the hallway, you get wristbands.
What we learned about, what we learned about writing a book. We learned how to use different fonts. We learned how to compare things. And back then, they used to play board games, and now we go on the Chromebooks so we could write a book.
We learned how to compare things. In 1957, they used to play in a parking lot, but now we have our own playground. Kids used to eat in their room, but now we have a cafeteria.
We learned how to use online resources to find out about holidays. We learned how to interview people. Here's some of the questions we asked. What kind of school supplies did they have? Did girls have to wear dresses back then? And what we meant by, did they have to wear dresses back then, was that they used to wear dresses, and they used to turn off the heater, and so a teacher walked in with pants, and that's how they started wearing pants.
We learned what, 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 what we, things used to be like, like the holidays. We, we used to do Hat Day, Chinese Dragon, Easter egg hunting, Career Day, and Mrs. Millie Becker used to read the Bible.
We learned how to punctuate, is like put a question mark at the end of the sentence. And we learned how to center, and we learned how to indent.
We, what we learned about Hawthorne's history. We learned that the percentage of cultural, cultures have changed at Hawthorne. For example, black, back then, used to be 28 percent. And for another example, white used to be 60 percent, and now there's 40 percent. And we, we learned different ways to say hello. For example, this is how you say it in Hispanic, hola. And this is how you say it in Chinese, ni hao. And this is how you say it in Nepal, namaste. And this is how you say it in English, hello. And this is how you say it in sign language.
We learned how to use Chromebooks and other technology. We learned how to make lists, and if you look on the screen, you can see a list about the websites we use. And we learned about, what we learned about Hawthorne's history. We learned that back then, they used floppy disks. Now they use the cloud. Back then, to print, they used mimeograph machines, and now they use photocopiers. To type, back then, they used typewriters. Now they use office apps.
We learned how to ask questions. We use timelines to record people's life. We learned that they used to have a tetherball, but they took it away for safety reasons. And one of our principals, Dr. Klein, found a Minerva Park bell, and she took it to our school at a warehouse, and she put glass over it, and people say they used to ring it before school.
What we learned about writing a book. We learned how to use photos to show how people have aged. We used Nathaniel Hawthorne's pictures, because our chapter was about Nathaniel Hawthorne. But the first one, he's in about his mid-20s, and then the last one is about his, right before he died.
And while we were doing that, all on the Chromes, we learned how to type and use capitals and punctuations on the keyboard.
We also learned how to use original sources, like books and poems by Nathaniel Hawthorne, and interviews with some people.
What we learned about Hawthorne's history. We learned that Nathaniel Hawthorne was a famous author and poet.
And a fun fact is that he hated his first book called Fanshawe so much that he bought back all the copies before anybody could buy it, and then destroyed all but a few. And when he died in his sleep, someone found it and published it.
What we learned about writing a book. We practiced writing topics in this to grab the reader, and we learned how to find definitions of the character traits on Google Docs. We, we learned that the school colors changed because, because the PDL president liked blue and gray, so they changed it from red and gray to blue and gray. We learned about Hawthorne mascot is the Mustangs. We, Hawthorne teacher, Ms. Montgomery, helps students select 12 apparent character traits.
Okay, so this one is a shout-out to Suzanne Kyle, who talked about being here, but she's not. Suzanne Kyle's done a lot of work with Dr. Bruce Perry and movement and how it helps you. And so every morning, everyone in Hawthorne raises their hand and does the Fabulous Five, and we're going to do that. But Suzanne gave me the suggestion that we do some movement with it. So we thought we would show off to you how we do this, and it just kind of helps us get our wiggles out, gets the blood flowing, so our brains work better. So we'll show you how we do it.
I will follow Hawthorne Elementary's Fabulous Five. I will follow enough directions. I will speak respectfully. I will be prepared to be an object to myself. I will be in control of my body, and I will come prepared to learn.
So that's actually an excellent segue. I need to excuse myself from this board meeting, because I am going down to visit with the officials of the Village of Minerva Park to talk about their plans in the area. So I'll be departing from the board meeting. But great update. Nice to see that finally Nathaniel Hawthorne got his due, and somebody wrote a book about him. So very good job, and appreciate everything that you guys are doing.
That was superb, but before Mr. Byrd leaves, I, Mr. Byrd thinks that the board should do that kind of movement? To get our wiggles out, so we can, so, thank you. That's, it's just awesome. Thank you, kids, for being there. From my perspective, that's just wonderful, what you learned and how you did it. So thank you, just for me.
That was fantastic. I really enjoyed it, not least because I actually grew up in Minerva Park, so I'm very familiar with Hawthorne. It's a great school, great project. I would like to see the other schools each do the same project. Yes. Sold! Yes, I will buy one. Yes.
Carol, do you have any?
No, I just want to thank you. I am amazed, and you did it so well. It was well-practiced, I could tell. But teacher, thank you, and the kids are gorgeous. I just loved watching you. Thank you. I learned a few things about Hawthorne, too, so that's great.
That's good, that's good. Leave a couple copies for me, okay?
So I want to ask, how many people would like to be authors when they grow up now? Very nice, very nice. That was delightful. I loved every bit of it. And I have to tell you, I bought the book. Again, we'll do another plug, $7.99 on Amazon. I'm sorry? Oh, I, yeah. I know, I would like them to all autograph this.
Will you, will you autograph them for us? Oh, great.
Yes? Okay. Now I don't know what I was going to say. Okay.
You can buy two of them.
Oh, all proceeds go back to Hawthorne. That's what I wanted to tell everyone. So please, 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 buy a couple. Thank you, thank you, Kate. This is awesome. You continue to just dazzle me. I mean, seriously, is she not the best teacher? She is. We are blessed to have her, and we know that. So thank you, thank you very much. Will you pass that down, and we get that autographed? Okay. So we're going to move on. We're going to welcome Kim Sharp, and she's already up here. We love that. She's going to tell us about Imagine Westerville. What's, what's happening with the plan?
Thank you, board. Kimberly Sharp. I'm the Deputy Director of Planning and Development for the city of Westerville. And I'm here to give you Imagine Westerville, a community plan update. This is a nonfiction doc, book. There will be a glossary at the end of this document, and it'll be full of bar charts, pie charts, and maps, I promise you. This is being put together currently with a group of city planners and an amazing citizen advisory team, which does include Suzanne Kyle from the Westerville School District. Thank you for sharing her with us. Planning Next and Kimberly Horn are consultants. They've really been fantastic in helping us. But most importantly, it's by the community members. As you know, most of you have been interrogated, I mean interviewed, by quite a few of us, and have participated in some fabulous community conversations about, how do we imagine Westerville being five, 10, and 20 years from now? And basically, we know there'll be about 7,000 to 9,000 more people and about 5,000 more jobs. And we're saying, what does this mean to us as a community? And I know you say, what does that mean to you as a school board, as a school system, when you have more people? So again, this is a brief update. We had a pretty good open house the other night, so I'm going to go through some of those results. But there's a few policies I really want to point out to the board and get your reaction to, because these are draft policies. But they have a lot to do about partnerships and relationships between the city, the school, and businesses, all working together for the community we want. Briefly, these are a little out of order. We're going to talk about how the document is being organized, where we are with it, and our next steps. So we do have, you'll notice, there's a foreword that's about how we So we're gonna move on. We're gonna welcome Kim Sharp, and she's already up here. We love that. She's gonna tell us about Imagine Westerville. What's, what's happening with the plan?
Uh, thank you, Board, Kimberly Sharp. I'm the Deputy Director of Planning and Development for the City of Westerville. And I'm here to give you Imagine Westerville, a community plan update. This is a nonfiction doc, book. There will be a glossary at the end of this document. And it'll be full of bar charts, pie charts, and maps, I promise you. Uh, this is being put together currently with a group of city planners and an amazing citizen advisory team, which does include Suzanne Kyle from the Westerville School District. Thank you for sharing her with us. Planning Next and Kimberly Horn are consultants. They've really been fantastic in helping us. But most importantly, it's by the community members. As you know, most of you have been interrogated, I mean interviewed, by quite a few of us, and have participated in some fabulous community conversations about how do we imagine Westerville being five, ten, and twenty years from now? And basically, we know there'll be about seven to nine thousand more people and about five thousand more jobs. And we're saying, what does this mean to us as a community? And I know you say, what does that mean to you as a school board, as a school system, when you have more people? So again, this is a brief update. We had a pretty good open house the other night, so I'm gonna go through some of those results. But there's a few policies I really wanna point out to the board and get your reaction to, because these are draft policies. But they have a lot to do about partnerships and relationships between the city, the school, and businesses, all working together for the community we want. Briefly, um, these are a little out of order. We're gonna talk about how the document is being organized, where we are with it, and our next steps. So we do have, you'll notice there's a foreword. That's about how we got to this point, where we are as a community. There's a community chapter, which I would like to thank a group organized by Dr. Krendel at Otterbine. And I know Nancy Nestor Baker helps out with this group, discussing what is our community? What makes us unique among other central Ohio communities, among other communities? And what do we really wanna focus on to remain, to retain that uniqueness in the future? And what do we need to measure to make sure we're hitting those goals? Development, what are we gonna build and how we're gonna build it? Mobility, how we get around. Economic vitality, because you have to pay for everything, and how you implement it. We do not want this to be a document that sits on a shelf for anybody, but actually a document people can use. So we did have an open house last Monday. I'll talk about that in a few minutes. That same presentation is in board form. All last week was at the Community Center, and all of this week, it's at the library. So anyone can go see these boards, and there's cards asking for people's opinions and little dots. We'll share about those dots in a second. It's all also online, at imaginewesterville.org, for people to give their input on what policies make sense to them and what doesn't make sense to them. We also have some maps for people to look at. Our goal is to work hard as a team to put together a public review draft, which should be coming out in June. And we do want a thirty-day public review, for everyone to have a chance to say, yes, this works for us, or this doesn't. Um, again, it's at the Westerville Library right now, for people to go look at and understand where we are. And that's the website. So the open house, there, it was a really good turnout. I wanna thank anyone who came. We gave everyone ten dots. There were a hundred and fifty-seven policies, and a great big map. And we said, we want you to highlight what you feel are the priorities for the community. And there were some yellow dots, if there were any, if there were any policies that didn't make sense or just wasn't working for people. So out of those, and we received a lot of comment cards. People were saying, we need some clarification. So development received, let me put them all up here, the most comments, but also had the most policies. Economic vitality received a lot of comments, community and mobility. So green were, these were people's priorities. Yellow were, they were, weren't quite sure, had some concerns. So I'm just gonna point out the top ten in support. And I think the school board would be very interested in the second half of those top ten. And then top ten of ones where they had concerns. So top support uptown, the heart of Westerville, promote uptown. Retain Westerville's unique sense of place by the quality site and architectural and landscape design. Continue to implement the uptown plan, again, the heart of the community. Number four was create innovative city amenities and resources. Number five, invest in infrastructure that will retain and attract businesses. How do we do this together? This is, these are deeper discussions we're gonna have. Encourage and incentivize retrofitting existing buildings. So it's not always about building new, but it's about understanding what you have and how to make it better. These are the ones we're gonna plow into a little bit more together. Understand that job creation is more than just building office buildings. Number eight, collaborate with Westerville Partnership. Number nine, enhance the efficient operation of the transportation system. And number ten, promote a healthier community. I did not do it like Jimmy Carson, but I think you get it. So I wanna look at two point five, and actually, two point six, a little bit together, because it actually talks about that, working together. So two point five, in totality, understand that job creation is more than just building office buildings. It is about workforce development, partnerships between city, school district, university, library, and businesses. Walkable places that workers and employers, should also say students, want to be. Easy access by truck, car, bus, walking and biking. Workforce housing options. And amenities which are attractive to the workforce and families, future workforce that want to be here. So I know in the nineties, I mean, there was this thing that office parks would bring jobs. But it's not that way anymore. Employees and employers aren't interested in driving to an office park, working there all day and then driving home. People wanna be in a place that's interesting to be, they can walk someplace for lunch or to take care of what they need to take care of. And I think the same, it seems to be, it seems to be very typical across the nation and across the world, where development is going. And so we're trying to stay attuned to what's happening and why. And the goal is not to be trendy, we know that. But the goal is to be resilient and to be sustainable for the long run. And I think walkability is very interesting for all generations in all economic venues. One other policy I wanted to point out, and I can either stop here and take some comments and questions, or I can go to the end and come back. But these were two main policies I wanted to present to the board. Again, these are in draft, and I'm happy to get your reaction. Two point six, collaborate with the school district to reach particular development, redevelopment goals. And when an agreed-upon economic threshold is met as a result of that development redevelopment, reinvest city funds back into the school district as a workforce development investment. None of this has been defined exactly, and this is just put out there from the community as, can we figure this out together? It's about workforces and about jobs, but we've gotta figure it out together. That's as far as we've gotten. And I would like the, the expertise and the knowledge here to help define that a little more clearly as we move forward. Should I keep going?
Would you mind going back to the first one real quick? I just, a couple things to point, I like, in this one in particular, you know, we've been working on our pathways model. And there's been a lot of conversation with the partners up there listed already about, including the Chamber, about the kind of partnerships we can make. We've had Columbia State, Otterbine, the Chamber, all of us kind of working on this one. And some of the work we're doing already fits within this model. So I think there's a lot of progress being made in this one, and some good things coming down the line as we do that.
Really, I'm interested in the C two six. That's a fascinating idea. And I'm wondering, have you seen this in operation anywhere else as you've looked across the country?
Yes. We looked at quite a few cities that invest back into the school district for various reasons. But the goal is workforce development. Which could be anything from technology in the classrooms to, there's a whole list of things.
I think this is really exciting. You know, we talk a lot about, we work in the partnership, we work together, the things that we do together, the return on investment, the social return on investment and so forth. And this would be, I think, a fantastic exemplar for this particular region, if we can figure out how to do that. And it's exciting to think about going forward with that.
Shall I go on? Thank you, Nancy.
The only comment that I'd like to be part of, another discussion, probably not tonight, is when, the part of the policy where it talks about when an agreed-upon economic threshold is met as a result of that development, I guess I'd like to be part of discussion is, what is defined as met? Is it, because, you know, we, the city does a great job with economic development and payment lieu of taxation, stuff like that. Currently, Westerville's sixty percent local funded. And the agreement that was worked out back in the nineties was basically thirty, anywhere from thirty to thirty-three percent. So I'd like to have some discussion at some point about the tax abatements and incentives, if we can somehow get a better understanding of what that means.
I have a feeling you'll help draft some of that language at some point, Mr. Byrd.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, I guess we were editing as we were working on this, right? So community and economic vitality. Oh, this was agreed upon at one of our stakeholder meetings the next day. That we don't have, education is woven throughout the document, but in reality, the whole community section right in the beginning should have an education subsection that points out everything that's here, that makes us unique and very special, but, but then cross-references to where it's woven throughout the rest of the document. It has a lot to do with economic development and jobs. And it definitely has a lot to do with the viability of our community in the long run. And we do have a lot going for us. So these were our top concerns. I should, should go from ten to one. That would actually be more interesting. So the number one top concern, probably won't surprise anybody, encourage multifamily housing development. And what was interesting is this policy did not say, we encourage multifamily housing development. It talks about how multifamily housing fits into the Westerville community. And I think if we go to the housing section, there's three main goals. One is that Westerville will increase its housing choices. Because right now, it seems to be your single-family homes, which thirty percent of them were built in the nineteen seventies. Or it's some multi, it's some apartments. And there's nothing in between. We had a whole discussion with Council and Planning Commission not long ago about what are all the choices in the middle? You know, the duplexes and cottage houses and townhouses and brownstones, and things that really make a community unique and special. And the fact that there's many more choices than just apartments or single-family homes. And how do we talk about that in our, how does it fit in Westerville? So that goal talks about that. The second goal under housing, that was the second goal, how multifamily fits into Westerville. And the first one is increase housing choice. The third one, actually, I stole from Dr. Kellogg a little while ago, is that existing, our existing housing stock needs enough TLC that it remains viable for the future generation of families. Because that is where the organic transition of a community really happens, is in our existing neighborhoods. So as we watch our aging population continue to age, and they're ready to sell, to downsize or whatever, it's our next generation of families that truly affect this circle of education and growth and so forth. Because the growth we're focusing on as a city in the way of economic development are these mixed-use centers in some specific locations. Now, those mixed-use centers will most likely be different types of multifamily and townhouses and so forth. And people are saying, well, the market for that are empty nesters downsizing or young millennials getting their jobs. Not necessarily the families. Well, we have a healthy housing stock for families, but how does it remain viable? So we need to talk about that. And we're listing lots of goals and things in a toolbox about how those neighborhoods, people can take advantage of these goals. It's not a matter of making, it's a matter of carrots available, not sticks, for people to think about how they can do that. So that was the first concern. And it's more, I think, more of a not understanding how that works or could work, or maybe the language isn't appropriate. This one also, I don't think it was worded correctly. It's, a lot of times developers will come in and they have this sprawling development with this huge sea of parking. And we're like, this isn't exactly what the community wants. And they're like, well, we're following your code for parking. And so people let parking rules drive the design of the site, which doesn't make it the best design. So we need to figure out a way where the parking rules do not drive the design. So we need to word that better, so it makes sense. Complete and expand upon the Allen Creek Corridor Park and Trail System. This comes straight out of Parks and Rec and Open Space Plan, so we probably need to work on the language of that. It might be just a clarification. Did I not, I, I didn't include the other top ten, and I apologize. There were a few others. There were no concerns about our education system, mostly all kudos. But then, the biggest policy language was how we work together, to understand our future together, five and ten years down the road. This map was huge at the open house, and it is available at those, at the library right now. As you can see, everything in very light yellow is existing neighborhoods that we love, where maybe they could use a little TLC, but mostly they're protected because people love living in these neighborhoods. The darker colors in purple are what we're calling strategic locations for smart growth. So a lot of that, you see up in the West Star area, up in the Northwest area. That's a lot of greenfield. You know, there's a lot of activity going on, a lot of proposals for, there's some, currently some apartments and some commercial development, some office development. You go down a little further on Cleveland Avenue, and there's the West Main Street, which is a gateway into both the uptown and Otterbine University. There's discussions there about how that could be a really interesting gateway and how mixed use could work there. And then we go down to Shrock Road, Brooks Edge, and South State Street. And this is lots of potential for redevelopment. And we're trying to understand what that means for our community, redevelopment. Thoughtful redevelopment, and baby steps, and so forth and so on. And then Central College, there's a lot of activity going on, but there's a lot of historic preservation that must be maintained. So that's a fine balance of preservation and development. And then up at Windsor Bay, there's potential. Do you have any questions regarding this? The, the document goes into a lot more detail about what the colors mean and the character types and, and what the vision of the community is. But I'm happy to answer any questions. And with that, we're still taking community input online and at these locations. There hopefully will be a draft document out early summer for people to go online. And there'll be a whole suggested edits people can fill out. We're gonna continue to visit with these different groups. We've been visiting that have been helping us to write the document. The citizen advisory team is gonna remain active through the completion of the document. And then we'll be for the Planning Commission this summer and Council this fall for formal adoption. Those are all public meetings and public hearings. I'm happy to come back to the school board at any time with more details at your request. And at that, I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Kim, I wanna thank you for including all of the partners that you've included in the work. That's the only way that something like this comes to fruition. And it's very impressive to have watched the work that you've been engaged in over these last months, leading up to the plan. So thank you for being very deliberate about that. Thank you for taking everyone's concerns, as well as their desires into account. It also is worth mentioning, you talked about the work that Dr. Krendel and I are doing along with other entities. And that is feeding into the Westerville Partnership discussions. That is, as I've said before, a remarkable evolution of our partnership together. The library and the schools and the college and the Chamber, as, as we all work together. And the way we share and the way we leverage each other's strengths can only be a boon for the community. And you zeroed in on that and understood the importance of that immediately. And thank you for, for taking that into account.
Thank you, but I can point out the community zeroed in on it, too, when they put it in their top ten priorities.
Yes, they did, I was so glad to see that.
No, I, I think it's a huge project, and I appreciate what you're doing and, and the fact that you brought it to us. Maybe, you know, coming back again as, after the summer, and people have an opportunity for input, it would be good to, you know, update us. But it's certainly a lot of work and effort, so thank you for all that.
Thank you, stay tuned.
Thanks, thanks for being here tonight. I, I would just add that the communities that I know around central Ohio and southwest Ohio, originally from the Cincinnati area, a long time ago. But the communities that I know that are most vibrant really are the ones that have all kinds of partnerships. Really, I, I usually think of them as, as a root system that's really working together. And we could name communities right here in central Ohio that ten, fifteen years ago were really struggling. But they brought in this mix of housing, this mix of development, and paid attention to how people get around in walking and biking and just all of this that, that you seem to be highlighting here. So I really appreciate the work that you've done, and, and I hope you will come back. My one question is, at the library, where people can go and see, they are going to see kind of a storyboard process? What is it they're gonna be looking at?
Very good question, thank you. There's an intro board that talks about the process, how we've got to this point. Then there are six boards that's primarily goals and policy language. Because it's the first time we've put them out as draft. And then there's a huge map. And then there's a board that explains what the colors mean in the way of character types. In the geeky planning, planning world, it's not so much about, you know, it used to be commercial here, office here, retail there, housing there, and you keep everything separated. But I think people have come to realize that means everybody has to drive to everything. And we're sort of going back to this very old-fashioned sense of mixing up the uses so people can walk more. But we have to do it at the right scale and the right flavor that it fits Westerville. So we're trying to find that from the community. We're trying to get the community to help us define that.
And where is that located? I was at the library today, but I, I didn't go in, I just went down to the pickup place.
They hung it in the wall outside of the main movie room. I don't know if I put that.
Oh, okay.
Where they show movies. Did I have that up here?
So it's on the big wall there?
It's on the big wall. I know it's hanging on a wall. And there's about seven boards, there's comment cards, and there's dots available, so people can actually, hallway outside the movie section.
Thank you, good.
So, Kim, thank you so much for taking your time and come back and sharing with us. It is very obvious that you are interested in feedback from the community, as well as a partnership. And we truly appreciate that. And we're interested in that, too. So let us know what we can do, and please keep coming back.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thanks for joining us.
The only thing I might add, and Kim, you don't need to stay, but just, the only thing I might add, I know that when communities start talking about development and houses, the next question is children in schools and enrollment. And what does that mean to our taxpayers and to our financial circumstances? And so we, we each year update our enrollment projections. Jeff Flores does that. And there's a lot of interaction between these kinds of plans and Jeff's projections. So that, I don't want the public to think that we get caught unawares about what, how, how many kids that might mean to us and what the implications that might be for the five-year forecast and for our enrollment. So know that those conversations do happen, that the right people who understand those numbers are in the room, and there's not a blank spot or a, a lack of communication between us and the city. So I, I know that's a natural place to go. And, and I, I don't think, I think where the city is going is where we need to go, because it's what the community is driven. But I want, I think the community should understand is, we're digesting what does that mean for us as this thing plays out, and we'll be fine.
I'm so glad you brought that out. Besides the formulas, we do a lot of computing of numbers. How many people, how many cars, how many, how many students? And that'll all be in the introduction chapter, forward chapter of the plan, sort of where we are. But there's also this idea that people ask all the time. But there's also this idea that people ask all the time, well, how can you add all that housing? You're going to overburden the school district. Well, we have to, we have to talk about that together because we hear different things from different people. And we are, we work very closely with Jeff to make sure we're using the right formulas. You know, for a single-family home, it's like two point something children. For a multifamily home, it's less than one, it's like point eight or point nine. And so those calculations, and we compare them to other central Ohio communities to understand what that means, and we share those back with Jeff. So we talk about calculations and projections. But a lot of other questions we're trying to answer together, such as, well, the school district is outside of the school limits. And we say, well, yes, so is the workforce that drives here every day to work and pay income taxes. And thirty, twenty-eight thousand people drive into the city every day to work. So these are the type of conversations we're having. We talk about them together, and it's great if we have the same answers also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Okay, 5.03, All Day Kindergarten Update, and Barbara Wallace is going to update us on that. Dr. Kellogg, do you want to say anything first?
Just as Barb's coming to the podium, I'll give her some time to mosey on up. Things are going, rolling right along. Barb will give you some idea of numbers and impact and where we're going, but good opportunity for you to hear from Barb real quick. And then if you have questions along the way, we're not done yet, but we're moving right along. And things seem to be going well. Well, I'll let her tell the story, so just be quiet. Barb, it's up to you.
Good evening. This is just a very brief update on what we've been doing since we last talked about all-day kindergarten. Our deadline for applications was April 24th. On Monday, April 27th, we completed a random selection process. That was our second random selection process. We did the same thing with our magnet lottery. That's just a fancy word for an electronic, help me with that word, a random, that's why it's a random selection process. It goes in about 30 seconds, we have the list. We had 408 applications. As we screened and scrubbed those applications and removed duplicates and removed students who actually did not live within Westerville, we had 369 valid applications. Those 369 valid applications represent 65% of the students currently enrolled in Westerville Kindergarten for next year. So far, 562 people have registered. We expect before the end of registration to have between 900 and 950 students for next On Friday, May 1st, invitation letters and waitlist letters were mailed out to the families. Included in this invitation packet was a tuition application waiver form with instructions. Families have until the 15th of May to return their acceptance letter with their first check or with their application for the tuition waiver. When we receive those applications, each one will be reviewed and eligibility will be determined. Behind the scenes, we've also been working on staffing. You know, we approved Mrs. Christine Doolittle as the principal at our last meeting. We have posted the secretary, the custodian, the health aide, the cafeteria, all those positions are posted, and we're in the process of interviewing. Our teachers, we've started for our kindergarten teachers doing the internal moves that are happening because of where all-day classes are going to be, and the four all-day positions at Longfellow are posted, but we're holding off on that until we get all of our internal moves done. Should all be done in the next couple of weeks. Moving forward, we'll complete the hiring. We'll be working with the teachers we hire to develop an all-day schedule. We'll be forming a committee to establish goals and monitor the progress of our all-day kindergarten program. We've already started ordering the curriculum materials. We will complete that and complete the renovations of the building here shortly. As this was all going on, our AmeriCorps volunteers needed a project, and on April 18th, went out into the front yard and pulled all the weeds around the trees and mulched all the beautiful trees in the front of the building. Looks very nice. That's where we stand today.
Great.
That is great.
You expect 900 and some?
Between 900 and 950. I think we're at 912 this year or 920.
Interesting number for me was, what you heard was, was it 65%? So of the people who, because you have to enroll your kid, you have to register your kid and enroll your kid at the enrollment center to start kindergarten. So over 60% of the people who have enrolled actually applied for all-day kindergarten, right? At the end of the day, when all the kindergarten enrollment's done, we normally carry between 900 and 950 kindergarten students. That would be regardless of all-day or half-day. So not everybody got enrolled prior to the cutoff date for all-day kindergarten. Now, we knew that was going to probably be a piece of it, and that's where we put a lot of communication, make sure families knew that was available. My question is, if all 900 people had registered, 65% of 900 would be a lot more than, right? So we're trying to get a handle on what the true demand is. I'm not sure if it's really a little under 400 like we had, or is it more than 400 if you count for all registrations? So it'll just be an interesting thing to see. Even if 400, that 400 number is our true demand, that means we had capacity for another 140 seats if we can, if we, if things work out and we can find space. That'll be the driver. As we see this play through, and we'll talk to the board about expansion in the future as we, as we roll this out and see what does that mean. So Barb and her team, and there've been some people just have done fantastic work on the backside, getting the electronic stuff right, getting the data right, running the data, getting the letters together. There's been some people who work some long hours, tireless hours, to make it right for kids and families, and I really appreciate that. We'll see how the tuition waiver piece goes. As she said, we're going to check the application for anyone. And that does not mean that eligibility for the tuition waiver for all-day kindergarten, that process is separate from the free and reduced lunch process. So going through that process is a process for all-day kindergarten waiver. Families still have to apply for free and reduced lunch through that process separately if that's what they want to do. We didn't want to commingle the two. So we'll see how those numbers play out and then what an idea of revenue generated, and start to see how all plays out. So if you have questions, we'll take them. Otherwise, thanks to Barb and her team.
We do plan on having our enrollment center ask people as they register from now until fall if they would be interested had they come in time, and then we will be surveying our parents in our half-day classes when school starts in the fall, just to pull it from two different sources to try to see if we can get a more realistic number of how much interest there really is.
It's a lot of work in a very short period of time, and you're carrying it out remarkably well.
Thank you.
Not a lot of errors. Thank you.
One quick question. So you said people need to get back to you by when?
May 15th.
May 15th. May 15th. Okay.
And I'm sure there will be a lot of phone calls. There are phone calls that go on throughout with all of this, with questions about what comes back, and just continue to work through it till we have it done.
Sure. That's a quick turnaround though. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to public comments, and we do not have any this evening. We do not have any financials. That leads us to personnel consent agenda, 8.01 through 8.08. And may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
And with that, Lori, would you like to tell us about the agenda tonight?
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board. Tonight's consent agenda does contain eight sections. Section 8.01 is two classified, the retirement of two classified staff members. 8.02 includes a resignation of a classified staff and one substitute. 8.03, we have cleanup resignations of various substitute teachers. This goes back to 2012 when we moved our subs to the ESC, and these are just the remaining subs that had not been resigned. Section 8.04 is change of assignment for one classified staff and two temporary change of assignments. 8.05 is a change of assignment for one administrator and seven teachers. 8.06 is a contractual status change for five teachers. 8.07 is employment of two classified staff, four substitutes, and nine summer food program staff. And 8.08 is employment of one administrator, nine teachers, and various supplementals for the summer intervention, summer school program. And at this time, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Not for me.
We do not. Part?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Thank you, Lori. Policy consent, 9.01. We do not have any. Sorry. Recommended old business, none. New, none. Recommended action standing business? Oh, the 2015-2016 membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association, 12.01. May I have a motion?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
And who would like to talk to us about that tonight?
Just real brief, this is just kind of a standard action. Since we take so much of their hardware from Ohio High School, we figured we might as well rejoin and re-up. Just an annual general, so just people know, this membership allows our student athletes to participate in the state tournaments, the fall regular season, and also provides catastrophic insurance for OHSAA-recognized sports. It's in our policy, is under, in its classic sports, and it just means that we're going to agree to buy, by all the bylaws and regulations of the Ohio High School League. So it's just a standard thing that we do as a point of motion.
Any questions, concerns? Okay.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 13.01, public comments, and we do have one this evening. I'd like to welcome Peg Duffy to the podium.
After Kim Sharp's presentation tonight, I feel somewhat like I'm at a major sporting event, and I can't decide which side of the field I'm on. I attended the Imagine Westerville Open House. Now, interesting thing, you saw what was on the boards, yes, some of the little yellow dots were mine in the comment card, you figured that out, I'm sure, but I learned as much from listening to the people around me, and that's what concerns me. And that's where I'm being pulled two directions tonight. There's a perception that the city of Westerville and the school district are synonymous as they were when I was an Otterbine student 65 years ago or something like that. It's my understanding that the city of Westerville is only 23% of the school district at this point. And so the city talks about, oh, yes, we're very conscious of the housing that's coming in and how it's going to affect the district. Hello, there are other municipalities who are also building. And I think that we need to do a better job of educating the city as to what is the composition of the district, reminding them that the district is a lot more than the city. Cooperation and partnerships, the feelings aren't as nice as leaders in the community would like everyone to believe. We still haven't heard a settlement of the Otterbine Police Force issue that went to the Ohio Supreme Court. And so everything isn't as happy as you're led to believe. Stick to your guns, guys.
Thank you, Peg. Up next, we have board comments. Who would like to go first?
I will simply say that I appreciated, I always appreciate the opportunity to honor the students that go to Boys State and Girls State, because that is a big honor, and they have no idea what they're going to get into, but it's going to be eye-opening. And I think that anyone interested in any phase of politics will learn so much that week. So I just appreciate the opportunity that Westerville can participate and that our American Legion supports us in that area. So thanks.
Continuing along that same line of thought, I was so pleased to hear from the American Legion our prominence in our students' performance on the America, American Governism test. It's interesting, and I was kind of saying this, I actually wrote a really long email to Dr. Kellogg last week and then deleted most of it because I thought he would think there was something wrong with me. But what I was going to say in that email is how remarkably proud I am of this particular school district and this particular community and set of communities, that we maintain such a strong focus on social studies, on history, on government, on understanding how these systems that are so uniquely American, how they work. And what we saw tonight is how we continue to succeed in that. And that's not something that happens only in our schools, as incredibly important as that is. It also is an underlying value within the particular community in which we live. So I was pleased to hear that we're maintaining our strong presence in that field of knowledge and field of understanding, and just very, very proud of this community for keeping that at the forefront of academic understanding. Now I don't have to write you an email. I'll write you one.
You can write as long as you'd like. I just really would echo, it's just really fun to recognize when the students and staff and teachers and just really collaborate together in this book and just the awards that have gone out. I want to thank Peg Duffy for her comment, and our treasurer as well, for just recognizing, you know, we just, we need, need to continue to be into emphasizing collaboration with the city and absolutely supporting them and saying, we are, we are just partners in this together, and making sure that it is a honest-to-goodness partnership and not just a partnership in name as well. So I'm very excited for, to see this go forward, and I, for one, will continue to kind of be engaged in that process. In my role, community engagement, liaison, so on, just let me share a couple of quick announcements with you. There's an exciting thing happening at Huber Ridge, another exciting thing happening at Huber Ridge, and there's a, there's a program called All Pro Dads, and essentially it's trying to help out, get male role, positive male role models into our school system, and Huber has done this. And I just want to share with you, they have, if you are at all interested, whether you're male or not, if you, if you would like to see this presence increase positive male role models, let me read it to you. On Friday, May 15, Friday, May 15, 7:00 p.m. at Huber Ridge Elementary, they're going to team up with dads and positive role models. They're going to talk about the program that they have at Huber. They're going to talk about how it can be connected to other schools. So if you are here watching this here live, or if you're watching this later on, I would strongly encourage you to consider attending this activity at Huber Ridge. I think it's just a, just a, it's an awesome idea. So again, All Pro Dad, trying to bring in positive male role models for the students Friday, May 15, 7:00 p.m., Huber Ridge Elementary. I hope, hope many of you can consider being there. Just want to, just a real quick shout-out to the teachers, Teacher Appreciation Week, yay, shout-out. Just excited for what you continue to do in our district. I was at one of our middle schools today and just seeing this activity and buzz in the hallways, and just saw them herding cats, and it was just really great stuff, this career day, and that happens, really, it happens year-round. And so just one week, you know, we just kind of raise the bar and say, thank you. And finally, if I may, have this moment, in my role at, again, community engagement, I think we as a board, staff, and the community want to offer at least a bit of support, condolences to our school community at the loss of two young lives this past week. Patrick O'Brien family and Nebiatt Arigay family. You know, I, I, I just say that we, this really, really is from us, it's not just me, it's, we, we know that at times like that, we have me. It's, we, we know that at times like that, we have tremendous people on staff that come into these schools, led by Tammy Santa, but, but just a tremendous cadre of folks that try to support the families, the immediate families. And what we sometimes forget is the school family. There is a, there is a family sense in local schools, and I would suggest, in school districts. So from me, from us, just some heartfelt condolences, and to know that we, we will stand with you in, in just embracing you and reminding you that you are not in this alone. And if a student happens to watch this, I would say to you students, you are not in this place alone, and to, and to reach out. There are people within arms' distance that will love you and seek to bring you to a place where you can stand once again.
Thank you. Dr. Kellogg, would you like to say anything?
Just a quick on the book today. So I find it interesting. So everybody's lamenting third-grade reading guarantee and the impact it's having on classrooms with this outside regulation. We have a very talented teacher, and this always reminds me about human capacity and taking the lid off. So all we did was say literacy was important, literacy instruction was important. We got it away. We gave him some Chromebooks. I got some help from a community member who was here this evening. And we went one step better than just reading. We published. So hats off to those third graders for taking it one notch above, and to the classroom, and to a teacher, and to everybody who made that happen. That's, not only did we, not only did we publish, but we're selling. So, good stuff. So I appreciate that. And it's just, again, representative, I know Mr. Valardo mentioned, teacher appreciation, just representative of what really, really good teachers will do if you just give them the resources. Don't assume we can't do better than expected and get out of the way. And so, those are my parting words for tonight.
You know, it would be nice if all of our libraries had a copy of that book.
Well, it sounds like I should make that happen.
Well, I just...
Before I get a lengthy email.
I just think it would be really, really...
I think that's an awesome idea.
All right. I love it. Barb, would you like to say anything? Okay. I echo what everyone else said here, but I would like to update you on one thing. Reflections. We honored those kiddos here a couple of weeks ago, and Lily Wood, fifth-grade student at Alcott, received a award of merit in literature intermediate division for her entry entitled, "The World Would Be A Better Place If No One Had To Be Homeless." And she is invited to the award ceremony that will take place in late June at the National PTA Convention in Charlotte, North Carolina. So we have so many amazing kiddos and teachers in this district. It is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I would like to remind everyone that it is the one profession that creates all other professions. So we appreciate our teachers. Thank you so much for all you do. And the last thing, Dr. Kellogg had a big weekend. He ran the Cap City Half Marathon and came in second place in his age group. We won't tell you how old that was, but kudos to him. No, seriously, he came in 30th overall, and there were 31 runners, so that was great. I'm joking, I'm joking. I'm so sorry. This is getting bad. Moving on.
I've been training full-time.
Dates, times, and location. The board will meet in regular session, May 18th. The board will recognize retirees in the sunroom at the Early Learning Center, beginning reception at 5:15 p.m. Recognition at 6:00 p.m., and then proceed to the board training room to conclude the regular meeting. The board will then meet in regular session on June 8, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. at the Early Learning Center. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Griffin?
Mr. Valardo?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. And we are adjourned.